Set the clap, call meeting to order. Mr. Huntimer, would you let us know of our allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As the record show, Melissa Burts is absent, Mr. Dowd is absent, all of the board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
It has, we are working off the revised agenda from Friday the 17th of March.
Public comments, please note that per policy 121-02, time limits may be established by the presiding officer. Per Board policy 121-05, Board of Education members may not comment on any public comments even though permitted to do so by law. Time limits of three minutes per person, total time of 30 minutes for public comment. Is there anybody wishing to address the Board? No? Okay.
None.
Thank you. District Administrator report?
All right, so a couple of things going around in the district. Right now, we have 4K screening going on, started today, and then we'll go through Thursday at the primary school. If there's anyone in the community who needs to get screened, they should contact the primary school and set up a time for their child to come in. Tomorrow night, we have a committee meeting, actually two of them. Policy Committee will start at 5 o'clock, curriculum will meet at 6:30. And then sometime between now and our next board meeting, we're likely going to have another policy committee as well to try to wrap up the AOLI drafts. So we'll keep you posted on when that's going to happen. Next week is spring break for all of our students and staff, so buildings will look somewhat empty next week. We've also got a choir trip going to DC, driving out there, I believe on Saturday, returning on Wednesday. Reminder that we have our elections, spring elections coming up on Tuesday the 4th. We have three seats. Our city seat is being run unopposed by Scott Bailey, that's a one-year term. And then we have two at-large seats, those are both three-year terms, and there are four people that will be looking to fill those two spots. And the names on the ballot that you'll see would be Sheila Troxel, Robin Dickman, Lacy Sobronik, and Lee Vanlandeig. And then likely the day after the election, either Wednesday or Thursday, we'll have an order of canvas or we will make everything official with those elections. And then finally, there is a high likelihood that the April 20th committee meetings will be moved up one week. So Policy, excuse me, Personnel and Buildings and Property meets the third Thursday of the month. However, that third Thursday is after our current Board's last board meeting on the 17th. And so we'll be looking at moving that up to the 13th so that this committee can finish up the work that they need to do. Any work that needs to go to the Board can go on the 17th before the Board reorganization meeting on the 24th of April. I'll remind you about some of those things on our April 3rd meeting, but those are kind of big things coming going around in the district right now.
Thank you. Was there a parent survey that was sent out too? Anything you want to add on that?
Yeah, thank you. There is a parent survey that went out to all of our parents. In fact, if you are spouse, you've got, both parents should have gotten one, whether you're of the same family, two separate households, everybody that's a guardian should have gotten a parent survey sent out. That is very similar to the staff survey that we did last fall, it's done by School Perceptions, collecting that data, and parents have a great opportunity to respond to some of the things that they see in our district, the good things, some of the things that they feel we need improvement on, how the communication has been, et cetera. And we'll gather up all that information and then use that to help drive our goals for the district moving forward. So that survey is open through this Friday. So if parents, we would encourage them to hop online, fill out that survey, and give us some good information back so that we can continue to move the district forward. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Board? All right, Board Member reports?
Foundation met on the 13th, discussed getting a new logo for the foundation. Ours is a little outdated, our cover letter still has all of our school names on it. We discussed and looked at new forms for people who would wish to donate for different types of scholarships. We discussed a form so that if a staff member would like to make a request for something that they see a need for in the building, they have something so they can submit it to the foundation. We discussed our calendar and what the rest of this year will look like trying to finish out through scholarships.
Okay, Buildings and Property met on Thursday, March 16th. We renewed our sweep agreement, and that is basically landscaping equipment that we use for baseball, football. So what it is, it's surrounding school districts get together and purchase the equipment, and then we all agree to use it together, pay a small fee instead of purchasing the equipment by ourselves, which is, some of it's quite expensive. We looked at our 10-year capital project plans, getting that in order, obviously looking at using more, getting it going on the Fund 46 heading that way. Looked at the ASR funding review. We started talking about the summer plans, what we're going to be doing over the summer for cleaning and repainting, stuff like that. And then we started on a discussion with a company called Nexus Solutions about what and if, when we go to referendum, what that would look like for capital improvements. So we're starting the conversation on that. Personnel negotiations also met Thursday, March 16th. We discussed the 2324 budget, Community Resource Officer continued discussion, employee benefits, as well as ASR funding requests.
Were we making any traction on the CRO? Is there any talks from the local police chief or anybody?
Yep, the Chief of Police and I met last week along with our city administrator, and they are trying to, they as in the city, is trying to allocate funds for their portion of the CRO that could take place in the second half of their fiscal year, which happens to align with the first part of our next year's fiscal year. They're a calendar, we are in July 1st, so they're looking at seeing what they can do from their budget, since their budget's already set. And if they can do something and the Board is on board with it, then we would look at adding it to our budget. It's a different funding mechanism than most of our staff, it would be on our Community Service Fund, Fund 80, but we would want to include that in our budget for next year if that's something that comes to fruition.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board members? All right, Student Council report?
All right.
Mr. Chambers, you don't want to hit that button on that microphone right there?
You'll push. There we go. Pretty simple, right? All right, so Student Council, bad change of news. We're not doing donkey basketball, they have given our day away to someone else on accident. So that was a great surprise for us, so maybe next year for that. As of right now, Events Committee and my committee were doing another blood drive, and then we don't have to do the movie anymore because Mr. Bosworth made it really easy and said seniors should pursue their college dreams on the days you don't have school today and tomorrow. School Improvement is still doing grad caps about a survey. And then talking about work release, changing it to like all-year kind of, more on that sometime in the near future. And then I did not get to print out one of these for all of you members, but I will share it to your email. Our biggest thing on our agenda is State Student Council. That is happening April 23rd, which will be on Sunday, so we would need permission to go to that. This is from Paige Keller and Noam Johnson, I'm going to read it off. It says, "Richland School Board, the High School Student Council would like to request permission to attend Wisconsin Association of School Council's convention on Sunday, April 23rd. It would also go through the 24th as well, and we would be staying in Green Bay. Attending this convention would allow the members of the Student Council to bring back new ideas to improve our school, as well as council itself. This is a great opportunity for our council, and we look forward to your consideration. Thank you for your time." So I will send that out to all you guys so you can talk about it. Any questions?
Ryan, with that waiver request, we can get that on the April 3rd. Can you work with High School Administration on the form, or can we get that so we can get it on there for you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Do you guys have a theme for that? What's the theme for that?
For the convention?
Yeah.
We just have, I think, committees. There's not really a theme that we know of. There just have different events that you can go to, and we have different committees delegated for that. Just creative marketing, some artifacts, and within that, there's different events for that. T-shirts, graphic design, press project, just kind of fun activities to bring leadership out there. Any other questions from you guys?
How many do you expect to attend?
Between eight and 12 students, and then Mr. Johnson is our advisor.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, make a motion, we approve prior meeting minutes from the March 6th meeting. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. We'll call Mrs. Sobronik.
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein?
Aye.
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 All right. Approval of statement of cash?
I move we approve the statement of cash dated on March 14th, 2023.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. We'll call Mr. Beal.
Aye.
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 Approval of invoices?
I move we approve Community First Bank general checking account checks number 85113 through number 85142 and ACH number 2223011101 through number 222301172 for a net total of $350,464.81. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Is there a second? A second. Mr. Board, anything to add?
No, I don't, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has one.
All right, Mr. Dowdner?
Aye.
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 Mrs. Steele, the selection of consent agenda items?
It would be 15A is to accept the donation of gift of money valued at approximately $600 from Schreiber Foods for the Richland Center High School Special Education Champion Games expenses. It would be B is the, number one, is the audio contract, approve the recommended changes to the 2000, whoops, excuse me, approve the audio contract for 2023-24. And then it's D is to approve the recommended changes to waive the employee handbook, Part 2, Section 2.08, and allow staff to work on district property in the event of inclement weather through the remainder of the 2022 school year. E is the summer school plans, is to approve the 2023 elementary summer school schedule at the Richland High School of two, two-week sessions of instruction, July 10th through the 20th, 2023, and July 31st through August 10th, 2023. And the teacher positions. Also approve the 80 hours each for the recovery English, math, and social studies, 20 hours each for English and math boost, 160 hours for summer strength and conditioning, and 426 hours for summer band for the 2023 summer pending we find qualified teachers. 16F is to approve all students and courses as presented. G is to approve the insurance renewals as presented and allow the district to fully examine all options for insurance coverage throughout the next fiscal year. And H is to approve the UTV access path to be created on the Richland Center Intermediate School property as presented. And that is it.
Make a motion, we approve consent agenda items, is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. Mr. Huntimer?
Aye.
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 All right. Make a motion, we approve modified agendas, is there a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Aye.
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 All right, unfinished business, district transfers and vacancies 2022-23.
So starting on page 29, you'll see the certified staff. This will be the last time you'll see the 22-23 certified staff. Any positions that we do not have filled at the start of fourth quarter? We would have already made arrangements, and so we would not have that. Should something happen where we need to fill something or have something that comes up, we'll bring that to the Board, but we will no longer have that in the book after spring break. And then the same would be true for support staff. We do have a couple of actions to act on later in tonight's meeting in closed session, as well as some transfers to be recognized as well. Page 32 shows the 2324 non-union jobs and assignments. We've got both of those positions filled. Myself as the District Administrator, John Bosworth as the Business Official, and then any pending resignations, we'll add those as well. I will point out also with transfers and vacancies, we have had a couple of teachers in particular that have put in resignations for the end of the 2324 school year, and we will bring those to the Board and act on those once we get to that fiscal year. So in July, we will act on those.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? I assume the ones for next year are not early retire, or not retiree, they're specifically resignation? Or would it be the same thing?
No, these, in particular, are early retirement, which is why we would act on it during that fiscal year.
Any questions from the Board? 2022-23 hours of instructions review?
So the Board had asked that we have this as an ongoing discussion, at least for the next couple of board meetings as we get through winter, because we were pretty close and we've already made a couple of changes to try to swap in-service days or non-instructional days to instructional days. You'll see on page 33, the number of hours, excuse me, the number of days that we have available for Monday, Wednesday, for EC and 4K, Tuesday, Thursday, and then the remainder of the primary school building along with the intermediate school and the high school, grade 7 through 12. When we made the last change, we had gained enough to give us, you know, about 1 and 1/4, 1.2 days of surplus at the high school. Shortly after that, we had that snowstorm come in at the end of the day on Thursday, carrying over into Friday. High School Administration with some great staff pulled a last-minute audible, and what they did on Thursday was they gathered up the students anticipating that we would have a potential early release on Thursday and a late start potentially on Friday. And they were able to turn those two hours, those blocks, into a virtual or at-home learning day. So staff was able to meet with the students before they left on Thursday, and fourth block was able to say, hey, this is what you're going to do in fourth block. And first block was able to meet with students and say, if we have a delay, this is what you're going to do. And it worked out just like that. We ended up with early out on Thursday, we ended up with a late start on Friday, and it all worked really well. We still now have that, those, that 1.2 hours in our bank for grade 7 through 12. So that was kind of the adjustment that we made right at the last minute, and it worked out pretty well. Barring, you know, an unforeseen circumstance, we're starting to get closer and closer to the end of the year. This week looks pretty good, spring break next week, we're into April. We do live in Wisconsin, so anything can happen, including floods and, you know, heavy snow. But we're a little bit closer than we were before, and I feel more comfortable that we've got a little bit of cushion built in after this last snowstorm. Any questions on where we're at with any of that?
Thank you. All right, AGR midyear report?
Pupil Services Principal Liz Perkins will be and taken by Amy Hardy. Ms. Dolan will be running the slideshow remotely.
And we'll be recording page 34 in your board book. Good evening. Tonight, we're sharing the AGR midyear data report for our kindergarten through 3rd grade students that are housed at Richland Center Primary School and Richland Center Intermediate School. AGR stands for Achievement Gap Reduction. Our district is in the third year of the five-year agreement with DPI. RCPS and RCIS have implemented instructional coaching, tutoring, and lower class sizes. We are focusing on closing the gap between our low-income students with the other students at each grade level. Along the way, we are always focusing on improving student academic growth and currently use iReady to monitor and check for growth in reading and math. The bottom green table is a breakdown of how many students that were tested using iReady at each grade level. It is then broken down further to show the number of students that qualify as low income or other at each grade level. I want to point out that our teachers and staff do not know which students qualify as low income. We do not provide instruction based on socioeconomic status. We use our free and reduced food service data to determine where the student falls when filling out this report. This information is only shared with the administration that creates this report. If you start, if you scroll up to the blue table, if you start and look at the bottom of the blue table, you will see the kindergarten section labeled 5K. You can see that our students in the low-income category had 44% median benchmark in reading in the fall, and midyear testing showed that 81% were median benchmark. That's amazing. The group in the other category had 63 median benchmark in the fall and 100% median at midyear for reading. For kindergarten math, if you go over to the right, 33% of low-income students met benchmark in math in the fall and 70% mean it for math by the midyear check. Kindergarten students in the other category had 42% median benchmark in the fall and 70% also during the midyear check. That 5K group in math is a great example of how we're closing the gap between the groups as both low income and the others ended up with 70% median benchmark in math by the midyear. As we move along to the first grade, we can see student growth in both groups in reading and math. I can go over this one too, and then we can move on. Students in the low-income category had 13% median benchmark in the fall for reading, and then 48 by midyear. First grade students in the other category had 29% median benchmark in the fall for reading, and then 60% median benchmark for reading at the midyear check. If we look at the low-income group for first grade math, you will see that 5% met benchmark in the fall and then 38% for median benchmark at the midyear check. The first grade other group had 13% median benchmark in the fall for math and then 39% median at midyear testing. And that 38 and 39% comparison in the first grade is another great example of how we're closing the gap. As you continue on and look at 2nd and 3rd grade, you see that both groups and grade levels have grown across the board in reading and math as we continue on in this school year. It's encouraging to see this growth, and it's just great to see the students on iReady and using that tool. As a teacher, last year I got to see it, it was new to me, and the students were engaged with it, and I could see that growth happening throughout the year. So I love that we're still using that. The teachers and staff do a great job of looking at iReady data together after the diagnostic tests to see where students are growing and still struggling. They then determine which students may need additional supports, such as instructional coaching and tutoring. Our AGR teachers do a fantastic job of working together, working with classroom teachers, and assisting to continue to monitor that growth throughout the classroom. So they get together after they do these diagnostics, they meet, they look at the students, their scores, and they regroup the students to see what they're needing at that time. So it's a good collaboration amongst the whole school. Mrs. Hardy helped prepare this, and Mrs. Brown is also here. They're both housed in the buildings that have the AGR teachers. So if you have specific questions about iReady or the AGR program through the buildings, they're here to answer them as well. We have great students and staff that are making great things this way. Any questions?
Well, it appears there would be one in the spring that we would hear this report again.
Yeah, we have June. Correct. It's where it's required that we do a midyear and then end of the year as well.
So on that, might I be able to request year-over-year comparisons, if possible? If that data exists from last year to see the percentage increases?
Yeah, it should be available.
Secondly, is there a state value that we could compare against from our district to a state average for the same report?
There would only be, if it would, not to my knowledge, we can look into that, but not to my knowledge, simply because different districts are using different tools of measurement.
Understood.
And so we'd be comparing apples.
This percentage is a national norm.
Within iReady.
Yeah. So if they are proficient, that's, they're, and that percentage is compared to the nation.
And do we have a proficient number? Maybe it would seem as though 100%, but I don't know if that's a realistic expectation.
Right. Well, there's, there's cut, there's cut numbers.
Yeah, so to meet benchmark, they have to be at grade level or above. So that's how they qualify to meet benchmark. 100% you're striving for, right?
Correct.
You know, so when you look at these percentages, we still have quite a bit of space to grow. We're just not there yet, but we're continuing to strive for that. Some of these percentages are looking mighty awesome at this point when looking at midyear, knowing we still have months ahead for growth opportunity. Some let you know, we have a lot of work to still do. Our students, our families, our staff, all together teaming to make that happen. It can't happen just with teachers alone, just with students alone, or just with parents alone. It's really a team effort to have our students growing optimally. Any other question?
So looking at the 3rd grade iReady math, that's one of the lower numbers up there.
Emily, can you by chance scan into our, thank you. Emily, can you by chance scan into our, thank you? So the fall, 12% for median benchmark, and by mid-year, 25%.
So is that an area that we'll pay special attention to?
As far as their growth and meeting in small groups and those type of things? Yes, that might be more in Mrs. Brown's wheelhouse.
Currently, right now, with our third graders, they've switched it up a little bit. Beginning of the year, they were doing mainly their groupings within their own class, but now they are starting to branch out and actually switch groups, which is something we do throughout our whole building. So we're kind of taking that on, and they're starting to see a little bit of growth. We've also looking at some of our SELs, our social emotional learning. We're looking at a lot of our numbers tying into iReady and just some of that other stuff too, and so forth and so on. We've noticed COVID. These third graders would have been kindergartners, and so that kindergarten first, second grade, they missed a lot of those. They still had the stuff, but that foundation wasn't necessarily there. So our third grade staff is really having to go back to basics and really work with these kids to try to get them caught up. So I would say that third grade group, even your second graders, you're probably going to see some struggles in the numbers over the years, but they're really working towards getting those numbers to improve within classrooms. And yeah, it's neat to see what these kids are now able to accomplish in conversations I've had with teachers when they've reflected of like, wow, they were here and now they're here. So there is growth. It might not necessarily see it in the numbers, and that's a tricky thing too, is this is a one-day, maybe a two-day test.
Right.
So it's a small smidgen of maybe what a kid knows, what attention spans for some of our third graders, they don't have it at times. So there's a lot more that those numbers probably aren't telling you about happening in our classrooms as well.
When do the, when do the tests take place?
So our mid-year would have been January, I think mid-January, I'd have to think about that, I'd have to go back and look. So after Christmas break, and then our spring ones will be, we have fourth exam in April, and then first or second week of May, when we'll do our spring ones. So I'll be interested to see what they are going.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Where's Doc?
All right. On to new business, USDA commodities purveyor contract 2023-24.
So this is on page 42. This is our annual USDA purveyors contract that we send out. We have done purveyor, we've gone back for a bit, that was Bearbu Cisco, and they've serviced us for four years. So recommendation we need to approve them as our commodities purveyor for 23-24.
Motion to approve Bearbu Cisco as our commodities purveyor for 2023-2024?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mr. Worthington?
Aye.
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 Epstein?
Aye.
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 Currys, to 2022-23 calendar revisions?
All right, so this is on page 55, and this is just for information only. This is a similar move that we did at the end of the second quarter, when we had a substantial number of days that students missed in a quarter, primarily up here at the high school grades nine through 12 because of the block and the fact that students are really getting a semester's worth of work in a nine-week period. It's important for staff and students to make sure that we've got an equitable number of days in each one of those quarters or semesters for those classes. So we did move quarter two back a week in January, and then we ended up with more days off in this quarter, and so we will be looking to move quarter three. Normally would end on this Friday prior to spring break. We'll actually extend quarter three after spring break the first four days and end on Thursday, April 6th. April 7th is Good Friday. And the only difference between this move and the move that we made in January, the one in January was only here at the high school. This will be district-wide, although it will still primarily affect the students up here at the high school. So essentially quarter four, excuse me, quarter three will run through Thursday, April 6th, 2023.
Does spring break always have to fall in that particular calendar week? And the reason I ask is because there's some concern with how this was scheduled, that, for example, ACT major testing is to take place here tomorrow, and so that would be a good way to kind of finish the quarter in that week. Then, spring break, A, relax, come back, hit it strong for the final quarter. However, now to come back for a four-day, will the level of learning, did it have to slow the pace over the last week of what instruction the students will get to try to space it out a little better for the four-day return? If the question makes sense, if we could consider this might happening in the future? And I guess I see a slight disruption with the week off right in between the finish of the term.
Yeah, I don't see, personally, I don't see teachers slowing down to stretch it out. They've lost enough learning days that, you know, they're still trying to get everything in. Obviously, when we have spring break, we would try to coordinate a quarter to end or start right around there. Calendars are done a couple of years in advance. This is the week that, you know, the calendar committee has traditionally tried to stick to so that people could make plans, things like that. But to your point, I understand we've been in a weird year this year and try to come back. It might be a little awkward to come back for four days, but it's better than them not having those four days.
Any other questions from the board?
2023-24 calendar has been approved by the board. It is that week next week, so, or next year, so, you know, if the board is looking at, you know, relooking at that, that's something that we could take to curriculum and move forward on it if they're wanting to look at that. But as of right now, next year's calendar is set.
Thank you. Trees and bushes removal on district property?
This would be the last page in your board book, page 98. So this is a recommendation from the Buildings, Property, and Transportation Committee. There are a couple of, several trees on Jefferson Elementary property that the city of Richland Center, City Electric Superintendent has approached the district that they're invading on the power lines, and so Mr. Jones has been speaking with them. And originally, they thought that they would be able to take that big tree on the corner down and avoid it damaging power lines. Mr. Jones spoke with Mr. Gall this morning, and he said it is just too big of a tree. We cannot get down safely, and so they are going to look at trimming that tree, keeping it away from the power lines and the roof. But we would still be looking at getting rid of some of those less healthy trees along the north side of Jefferson property, that's Third Street that runs through there, that picture on the left on page 98. So the two big corner trees, we would trim. The ones in the middle, we would look at having removed, and again, that's coming from a recommendation from the Buildings and Property Committee as well.
And one of the things, I didn't see it listed here, so that's the main power line to the hospital? And that was the reason behind getting that taken care of? Because if that line goes, then it's, the hospital's generator is going to work, but it'll be limited on what it can supply. And I had pulled for discussion mostly to just try to salvage as much as we could, knowing that the one on the corner is going to stay as beneficial. And if you mentioned less healthy on the Third Street, I was just reconsidering and trying to save any trees possible. And if health is a factor, then so be it. If it was just less convenient, then I would have advocated to keep every one possible, so.
And certainly not to say that once they're removed, that we can't replace them with healthier trees and, you know, things like that as well.
Motion to approve removal of trees located at Jefferson Elementary and bushes in front of the Richland Center Intermediate School?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Further discussion? Aye.
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 Make a motion, we move into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851 CE and/or F, Wisconsin Statute to Consider Employment Promotion and Compensation of Employees for Purposes of Discussing Individual Employee Hiring and Medical Reasons, and E, to discuss negotiation strategies with employee groups. Wisconsin Statutes 19.851E for the Purposes of Discussing Sale and/or Purchasing of Public Property, and Wisconsin Statutes 19.851F, and Wisconsin Statutes 118.125, to discuss student open enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
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 Aye.